Like to call this meeting to order. Any public comment related to any of your agenda items? Can we please get her a seat so she can see, please? Get her a seat so she can be in the know what's going on. And get her an agenda, it's blue, go get her an agenda right now. Item for information, uh, financial, uh, Mr. Agnew from JMA.
Thank you, Mr. Culliver. Financial reports that we, we give you on a monthly basis are there. For your information, just a couple of quick highlights. Our revenues currently sit at about ninety-one percent. We've received ninety-one percent of what we had budgeted. Expenditures are at sixty-seven percent of what we had budgeted. We're three-fourths of the way through the fiscal year. Uh, one quick note there, keep in mind that our the teacher salaries, actually those expenditures, even though they're recognized as of June thirty, those include July and August salaries for the teachers because they're on a September one through August thirty. Um, salary schedule. And just one other note, thought I'd throw in there, our general fund cash balance is at about seventeen, a little over seventeen million dollars there. Are there any questions regarding those reports?
None heard, thank you. Um, did you cover the, uh, charter school tuition review? Or that's all in one, you just said that, didn't you?
I'm sorry?
The charter school tuition review, did you?
Do you want me to comment on that? Is there something there?
Do you have anything for that at all, by chance?
Um, let me just pull that up here really quick. Oh, well, we can thank Aura for that, she's our. I, you know, that just kind of lays out the, the, the expense according to different categories of charter schools that we have. My, my report is not loading here, but, you know, it just gives us an idea of where those charter school dollars are being spent, what types of charter schools that students who live in Still Rocks, where they're, where they're attending.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
My pleasure. My pleasure.
All right, so before we get into the presentations, good evening, everyone, thank you all for coming out too, it's a nice meeting. We definitely appreciate it, this is, um, our second meeting in the community, we're trying to do, um, quarterly, you know, uh, community, uh, community meetings and everything. Make sure we're actually coming to meet people kind of where they're at. You know, we always ask people to come to us, well, you know, we meet people where they're at, you know, it's a, it's a win. And we get more of a, more of a crowd sometimes as well, and more, more people to be in the know. Um, I also want to go ahead and welcome our superintendent at the moment, or in, I'm sorry, interim superintendent. Uh, we hired him last month and he wasn't here for that, so I want to officially welcome him to, uh, or, or the, the table with the school board in his first meeting, so, welcome, sir. Do you have any words? Um, any, 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 how was your first few weeks being here?
Um, first of all, it's really an honor and a privilege. Um, to be here to help the children of, uh, the school system. And I've spent a lot of time in the buildings and they're awesome, I mean, every person I go past, I say hello. You know, good morning, have a good day, and they all say hi, they look me right in the eyes. So they're great, they're very respectful, very polite. So the highlight of my day is when I'm, especially going up to the elementary school with the little ones, and you know, that's priceless. But everybody, everybody has just been wonderful. I've been pretty busy, I wrote down some things because I anticipated that he would probably want me to share my first three weeks here. So each of the principals, we did a meet and greet faculty meeting. I have done numerous, probably two or three times a week, I get into the elementary schools and each day, Mr. Hauser and I walk through the high school. I had my initial meeting with the, uh, union representation, so that went well. I went to a superintendent advisory committee the first or second or third day that I was here, and what that is, is superintendents meeting up at Parkway Votech. We had a delicious breakfast. Last week, I was here for the National Honor Society and that was just, that was a ball. The kids were dressed up, they had their gowns on, and it was really cool. And the food was great. So thanks, Mr. H, that was a wonderful evening. A bunch of recovery plan meetings, kindergarten staffing meetings. Next week, we're going to focus in on staffing. I have an AIU, Allegheny Intermediate Unit, uh, superintendents meeting. And I think the highlight next week for me is I'm going to have, I'm going to do a little different, the students of the month. So normally, we cater it through food service. But I told, uh, Mr. H that I'll take care of this one, we're gonna, we're gonna do something special and we're gonna have a ball for lunch next week with the students of the month. So that concludes my little report.
Thank you. Thank you, sir, welcome, again, welcome to our district, again, one more hand applause, round of applause for her.
Thank you.
All right, up next, of the happy moment, got a little sad moment coming up, but, uh, I'd like to welcome up to the microphone, uh, Ms. Beth Harvey. She will be, she will be retiring after thirty-one years. Oh, I'll be calling them up in a second, give me one second, they're coming up, we're gonna make it happen. But after thirty-one years, she'll be retiring, um, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, I don't think, I mean, many more words, we'll, we'll do justice, but thank you. I want to talk to you for a second and you please speak on it.
I'm a little emotional about it.
That's okay.
These two are definitely pushing me. More than anything, but I've worked with a lot of great staff, a lot of great students, years, I've watched them grow through kindergarten and graduate. I love it, I'm gonna miss it, and I really wish Still Rocks and the community the best.
Thank you.
Thank you, all right.
Don't wait, 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 don't go nowhere at all. So on behalf of the school district, we have something for you as well.
What is happening, she said?
Family, please, come on up, family, please. Family, you're on up, family.
Aw, thank you guys.
Remember this?
I did, yeah.
On behalf of the school district, for the case for you, flowers. And we're gonna take a big photo, please, if you don't mind. Put it over this way a little bit, then we'll take a photo on that way. Come on, family. We, we want to back roll. Want to back roll a little bit. Come on, school board.
You know what, Chad?
Where, where were you at? All right, I'll let you live. Ms. Hoover, thank you very much for taking care of business. If anyone has any other words, family, what it meant to you, schoolwork members, you want to welcome to say, um, you know, words right now, I know we still got a few months for gradu- graduation, you know, but still, family, you have any words? Family? Thank you. You know it. Y'all have a good night, thank you. Next up, uh, recommended new hires, we're gonna welcome Mr. Tori Johnson, pay professional at the upper elementary, come on up, good sir. How are you?
Tori Johnson. Go Birds, there we go, there we go. Um, I came from Sarasota, Florida. My brother brought me up here, uh, Shmari Phelps, you guys, he's an athlete right here.
How was your brother?
Yes. So, um, so I'm here, I'm gonna do what I, I can, do my best to get these students in shape and do what I gotta do, help out in the football program as well.
Welcome, welcome. Why, why, oh, come on up, you know, we got a couple of questions. We said it before to me, but why, why Still Rocks? Mathias Amari telling you, come on, brother.
Just as, he told him about the community, he told him about the football program. So I wanted to come up here and look myself and see what's going on and help him out and be positive and communicate with him.
That's it. Any questions? Thank you, look forward to you making your imprint in our, in our, uh, our school district and our community, so thank you.
Thank you.
Up next, want to have, uh, Mr. Agnew from JMA, want to update on the twenty-five, twenty-six school year budget.
So in March, um, when we were over at the, uh, Votech there, we went through a similar packet. Um, in detail, I'm not gonna go through all that again. Um, not a lot has changed, a little bit has changed in the total revenues and total expenses, but um, nothing super significant about a, you know, probably even less than one percent change. Uh, the revenues did increase, our budgeted revenues, our projection increased a little bit, we picked up some, some E-rate things and, and school improvement there. So you can see our, our, our budgeted revenues were at thirty-nine point seven million. That's on page three, and then on page four, um, are the expenses, total expenses, and those uh, increased as well. A couple of other things that, that we, we recognize were not part of what we shared with you in March. Some supplemental, uh, salaries there as well as, um, some additional IT expense. And then, um, the, the superintendent piece, you know, so we have Dr. Weischidel in there. Um, as well as, we're still, we're still paying our previous superintendent through December thirty-first. And then, um, we have in the budget, the, um, the, we're anticipating, you know, hiring a, a new superintendent, so we, we just shored that up, uh, covering all three of those pieces, um, in the superintendent, um, expense line item. Additionally, the, the, our health insurance, as, as you folks know, is through ASIC. Um, they are, they initially gave us an estimate that health insurance was going to go up nine percent. Um, and they backed that down a little bit, down to about five point seven percent, so we made that adjustment as well. So you can see our, our, our budgeted expenses there on page four are at thirty-nine point one million dollars. So that's where we sit at this point in time, there is some additional information in there. Uh, once again, a lot of that is similar to what we went through in March, so I'm not going to, um, I'll certainly address any questions you have, but I'm not going to go through all that, uh, here again. I know, and we anticipate when we come, well, not anticipate, when we come in, when we come in May, um, we will have, it, it'll be an official proposed budget for the board to, uh, for the board to, it, vote on as a proposed budget. And then we can, we can post it out there, and then at the June meeting, the, uh, the board will, will officially approve the twenty-five, twenty-six budget.
Thank you, sir, appreciate that.
My pleasure.
Any questions? Please.
So on behalf of financial recovery, I just want to clarify, um, some of the language here about the exit criteria. So it's a finance recovery plan, certainly there are financial elements, most of the elements are financial. But there's also academic goals and documented progress that has to be in place to qualify for that exit. Um, and, and again, just to clarify the finance piece of that, the district would have to have three years of an overall positive fund balance successive years, which you've indicated, uh, Mr. Agnew, that we're on track for that. Uh, two of those successive years of the three have to be positive annually. So for the July one to June thirtieth of that fiscal year, we have to spend less than we bring in. Okay, so separate from the overall, and the five years is specific to a forecast. That's, that, that's our struggle at this point, is we project out, project out in the absence of all that COVID-ESTER money, how do we look in terms of are we, are we living within our means? So that's really where our focus is going to turn, and certainly we got to keep our eye on the academic piece because we have to show evidence of improvement. And we know the challenge is, you want to be lean, as lean as you can be, without compromising, and in our case, we want to improve the student outcomes, the student experience should be quality, and it should be comparable to what the students can get somewhere else, that, that will bring down the charter school spending and hopefully have a really positive effect. So I just want to be really, really clear, although we have, it seems to be on track for one of those components, there's more to it, okay?
Thank you. I'm next, I'm sorry, I'm next, you want to, uh, go into, um, school board member interview? So with that being said, um, as we know, school board members, you know, we've been sitting on this board now, there've been six of us for a good while now, you know, we started this year, last year, it's all, it's all blurred, but last year, we did get, get our strength back, we got up to, um, up to nine. Um, and then unfortunately, you know, we had some folks, you know, long story short, it's far by the wayside, right? And we really love, people come on here with great intentions, and they actually, actually want to do what's right for the betterment of the district, right? No agendas, nothing at all, you know what I mean, and we really do appreciate when folks show interest in doing this, because it's hard work, you know, and there's a lot of things that go on behind the scenes that people just don't see. Being a board member means a lot more than just showing up on Thursday, as Director Roberts would say, you know, um, vote and go home, that's not how that works. We do a lot more work than that people think about, and guess what, we don't get paid. You know, and we don't do it for a paycheck, though, anyways, it doesn't really matter. Um, we all got something going on outside of here, but we still show up, we do our, or do deal just for our community, I mean, make it happen. So to have someone interested and then when you talk and understand, or just see why they're interested and whatnot, and you get that warmth, you know, that, that, that feeling is like, yes, let's go. So I'm actually happy to bring up here, um, Denisha, I say that right? She said you better say it right, uh, Hunter Rue, and please come on up. Tell us a little bit about yourself, who you are, where you're from.
Yeah, sure. Hi, everybody, um, most people call me Dani. Um, I moved to Still Rocks in twenty-twenty-two, uh, so we bought a house here, it was an affordable place to live while I was finishing grad school. Um, so I'm from Hershey, PA, my family is from central Pennsylvania. Um, but me and my husband and my mom all live here. I have a baby on the way. Um, and, uh, will be in Still Rocks for the foreseeable future. Um, I don't know that much about the school district or how it operates. Um, but, um, for grad school, I'm in a PhD program studying developmental psychology. Um, I'm a licensed, um, professional counselor, so that was my life beforehand. And then I have a bachelor's degree in business admin, so some sense of understanding finances and things like that. Um, I think I'm interested in understanding how I can get a more plugged into the community. I've been in Pittsburgh for about ten years, um, and it's a very interesting place, and sometimes it takes a really long time to kind of like get involved. Um, but given that I'm finishing my dissertation in December, I've decided I'm going to take on some new, hopefully some new, uh, opportunities, have a little more space in my life to do some more service. Um, I'm definitely service oriented, um, I serve on the Black Girls Equity Alliance doing sort of small projects. Um, and that's like, in the city of Pittsburgh, um, I volunteer in different ways. Um, so I'm really interested in giving back, and it'd be nice if I could give back to Still Rocks, um, since, since I'm here, so that's sort of the main sort of things that I'm thinking about, um, I'm not sure what qualifications you need to know about exactly, but, um, I'd be happy to.
I was gonna say, we, we, um, the qual for a member, we've discussed it, we know, we, we spoke and whatnot, you answered the question, so yes, yes, you're qualified to be a school board member, let's, let's say that, you wouldn't be here tonight if you weren't, all right? Um, but, but again, thank you for your interest, you know what I mean, to want to be a part of something different, want to help out your community. Um, thank you, yes, we're going to ask some questions here in a second, I'm just gonna get more, I think of you, I know who you are.
Yeah.
Um, but with that being said, I'll leave it up to y'all, any questions on the table?
Make them hard.
I have a question.
Sure.
You say you've been in this area since twenty-twenty-two?
Mm-hmm.
Why now for the school board?
Um, because I'm finishing grad school, and grad school has taken up a lot of my life. I've been down to the MRDC meetings a couple of times just to sort of see if I could get a sense of what was happening. And so I don't know this area really well, um, my husband is from Pittsburgh, but he also doesn't know this area really well. Um, and then I was, um, part of my dissertation, I was to go into, was supposed to be to go into Still Rocks and do some sort of, um, the Resort of Justice project that's there. Um, I was going, I was supposed to go in there and like talk with the teachers and do some school-based research. Um, but the government sort of shut down. Um, and so I was looking for another way to sort of get plugged in, and so the school board seemed like maybe an option. Yeah.
Been a while. So thank you.
You're welcome.
If you want to get involved in the community and do more service here, you're in a great spot.
Okay.
Amongst the right people.
For sure.
In the right building. In the right building. Feel free to, you know, communicate with any of us at any time because we're all kind of needy in it.
Okay. Yeah.
Do you have any other children? It's not a personal question, it's leaving me.
Yes, so I have a daughter, but we have, uh, joint custody, so she doesn't go to school here. Which also makes it tricky.
Being that you're not from here, and I don't know much about the area, what have you heard just being amongst the community? Good or bad?
Yeah, so I've heard, um, that, uh, the high school is seventh through twelve, which as a developmental person is pretty tricky. Um, and so I've heard the high school has had a harder time, um, sort of managing student behavior and things like that. I've heard pretty positive things about the elementary and middle school. Um, and I've heard the district has struggled a bit with, um, maintaining their academics. And, uh, being financially, I guess, sound for, um, independently. Um, but I heard also that like it's all on the move, like towards more like positive direction.
So with your background and experience, how do you think you'd be able to come in and be a benefit and a part of our team with us being in financial recovery as well as possibly considering reconfiguration of that seven through twelve grade.
Yeah, um, I definitely, I, I think I come from a research background, so I'd be, um, interested in whatever ways I could help either obtain data to help us make decisions or, um, have a better understanding of what the finances are. Um, that was a bachelor's degree, so like, I have a sense and I can, uh, learn a little bit, but I think my main focus is thinking about how do we logistically make our school spaces that, um, because I don't think it's the kids, I think some of it is just the challenges of putting seventh through twelfth graders in one room because middle school is a wild time. Um, and I study adolescents in particular, and so some of that challenges that I think I've heard in high school are partly because they're all in the same building. Um, and, um, it's hard when you do a lot of work in the elementary years and then stick them in kind of a chaotic spaces, what I've heard. Um, and I've also heard that there's a bit of violence in the community, but there's also a lot of programs that are trying to remedy that as well. So I think my things that I would like to bring would be around thinking developmentally, um, about what children need as far as their mental health and like academic support. And then maybe, um, bringing some of like that research base where we can help make decisions using data. Yeah.
I think I have a comment, um, just the feedback that you received regarding like the school district, you're not as comforting. Like you heard what was happening, you're willing to be here to make a change. I also am originally from, uh, Pittsburgh, but I'm here at Still Rocks, so having kids here and knowing some of those people, like these people at the table, um, in different settings, made it a lot more comfortable and easier for me to be a part of, be able to have a voice on this thing, so I just want to.
Everybody looking at you. We really appreciate it. They have an amazing team, um, yeah, I think we're headed in the right direction, they're amazing people, they want to teach children, they want to actually buckle down and give it all and yeah, we're just trying to help what we can.
So again, I'll say thank you for your interest, you know, um, again, um, you know, he said, we're, we're heading in the right direction, we really are. The culture is changing, uh, the culture has changed, I'm gonna say that first of all.
Yeah.
But it's still changing, you know what I mean? And, and we're, we're, we're moving, you know, all gas, no brakes, right, that's what we're doing, right? The, the phrase, right? All gas, no brakes, so we want to see better for our community, better for our kids, better for our staff, you know, better for the folks in our district in general, right, that's what we, that's what we want to do, over here. It's funny because I actually know her husband. So, um, did my, did my research on you, like, who is this, right? And, um, so I worked with her husband ten years ago, uh, at Best Buy, oh, more than ten years ago, actually. More than ten, jeez. Back in twenty-ten, you know, it's about twenty-eleven before I left for the military, I actually worked with her husband. So I'm like, researching her, I'm like, who is this person? Can't find you, then I use Dani, I was like, okay, I found Dani. Because I got a friend in common, which was, the friend in common was her husband, and I was like, hey, do you know her, like, who is this person? He was like, that's my wife. He was like, you want to get something done, you tell her, you don't get nothing done, don't tell her. So I appreciate him saying that, again, appreciate your interest, not just us, but the folk at the table, we're everywhere. Literally, we're everywhere, you know, every community event that goes on, you'll, you'll see, if not one of us, two of us there, right? This building that you're in right now, this is like the hub for the community. You got someone that works there, the executive director here as well, and, and, it's like the director there right now, and someone who thinks they work here sometimes, you know what I mean, so, like, we're
I work upstairs.
Exactly. Exactly. Hey, you know, so we're, we're all here to be of service, of support, and we can tell you're here to be of service, of support, and we appreciate that. Um, this is our team. And we usually have a student here as well, who sits on the board as well, so we can hear the, 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 uh, student's voice as well, you know what I mean, so you got anything, sir?
Pleasure to meet you.
Oh, yeah.
We missed her for about six months.
Oh.
We will, um, so what happens today is, we met you, we talked to you, next week we're in a meeting as well, um, but that's our voting meeting.
Okay.
So we'll be at the high school.
Okay.
Um, and then there we'll actually vote, okay, so at that meeting, we'll actually vote, um, to say yea or nay, it sounds like, I don't want to say it, but it sounds like what it's going to be, but you know, we, we vote at that meeting to just say whether we want to bring you on the team or not.
Okay.
And then we'll go from there, and then you and I will be talking a lot, you and our secretary over here will be talking a lot, um, and going in the right direction, okay?
Yeah.
So again, appreciate you, thank you.
You're welcome.
You don't have to leave if you don't want to, I'm just saying. Something's talking about. All right, next up, we'll go into our Noggin's Agenda. Um, any questions about the meeting minutes of Parkway West and Still, or our district last month? Any comments from Parkway West? But also management, Mr. Agnew?
Uh, yeah, you have the two lists there in front of you, uh, one for general fund, one for the cafeteria fund. Certainly happy to answer any questions, um, pretty standard expenditures, you know, for the general fund. Um, pretty standard expenditures, you know, for the general fund. The larger items there are transportation, um, tuition payments and health insurance, but.
I have a question.
Okay.
In the, um, general fund, don't kill me because I did not write down which section. It was, um, look at me. It was, it was the Toshiba Renault. Toshiba Renault.
Maybe there's enough power here.
It was, um. Don't kill me, y'all. I'm sorry. I was just wondering, it had, um, principal, it was like rentals.
But Toshiba, we.
Good to offer, right?
Uh, it's our, it's our copier lease.
Okay, and that was one for each building. What threw me off, here's what it was, like I know what Toshiba, what threw me off was the way it was written. It was, um, rentals, something, something, vehicles. Like what vehicles are we renting?
Well, if, I mean, we could look through here and I can, I mean, I may not know off the top of my head, but we can certainly.
It's the machine, right?
Yeah, like it threw me off.
Is this it right here?
So they call it vehicle.
Yeah.
Okay.
I was like, wait.
So, so these are just the descriptions of the expense accounts? Um, I would, I mean, those, I would, I would focus more on the code, but the, the description would, would just, it just encompasses equipment and vehicles.
And that's what threw me off when I saw vehicles.
Yeah.
I was like, we rent vehicles for each building. That doesn't make sense. I had never picked up on that before. For some reason, it caught my eye. I don't know.
Yeah, that's, that's the, uh, the copier lease there. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Next, we'll go into operations. Uh, number one, approve the following ABC employees for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Uh, Alema Bozer, Alema Bozeman Wallace, van driver and monitor, Mark Pryor, and Joey Troll, both van drivers. Any questions? Number two, except donors choose projects awarded for Elena Hall, classroom project emotional regulation tools, and Claire Teddy, classroom project empowering minds with evidence-based interventions. Any questions?
Van driver and monitor, she's going to drive a van some days and then be a mechanic the other days.
It depends, she's probably like filling, like they need her to fill in as a monitor, she's filling in as a monitor, or she could be a van driver, so she's a face, she must have the driver's license to be able to do whatever they, whichever one they need her to do.
Number three, approved a securely quote for sixteen thirty-seven fifty to provide pass core online program at the June Year High School from July one, twenty-five to June thirtieth, twenty-six. Information can begin this year at no additional cost. Any questions?
That's not working either now. Like, how's that work?
Do you think it'll be beneficial with them?
Wildly.
Wildly.
Um, so, all right, I won't get too deep. Um, but so essentially it's a digital hall pass. And so right now, like even when we look at the data within the building about our discipline challenges, the biggest challenge is tardy to class and skipping, like astronomically larger than, uh, physical altercations or, you know, what we think is happening. Uh, the digital hall pass will allow us to, right now, we're tracking students, right? But it is very subjective. If I mark a student tardy, it's because like, oh, I marked them tardy. And meanwhile, the other teacher might not know what's going on or might not know where they are. It tracks students according to, and the student IDs will come back into play. The one-to-one ratio will come back into play. And so in order to be able to leave the classroom, I have to be able to sign out. And so then I get to see who's in the hallway all the time with the same people. Um, when it comes to assigning, it tracks it all. Like we're working so much harder and not smarter. Um, and it's two thousand twenty-five and it can do it for us. So it's wild, like, it's like Christmas, like, please say yes.
Not single, you can't make a selection, they're going to the restroom.
Yes, yep, all of it. And then also parents can have access to that information too, so I'm always trying to communicate.
I do like this. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, yeah, I like that. I was going to ask you about the badges and how it all worked out, but no, not now. I'm just saying, I'm glad you said that. Thank you. Thank you. Approved, God bless you. Approved the renewal contract of the Nutrition, Inc. to provide food service management services for next school year. District approval is subject to final approval by the Pennsylvania Department of Education, Division of Food and Nutrition. Number five, approved the facility usage request from Pittsburgh Basketball Club from May twenty-first, twenty-second, twenty-seventh, twenty-ninth, June thirteenth and fifteenth for University Summer League at the Upper Elementary Gymnasium. No one's here, but usually they do though. Usually it's teams from all over. I don't, no one's here to talk about it unfortunately, but that's a good question. Years past, we didn't, years past, we didn't, Still Rock didn't have to pay if we were approving it, but just don't say this. So you're going to get some verification. So years, years past, our school didn't have to, our kids had to pay because they're using our school.
Okay, so they have to pay like the registration fee to play in that whatever tournament is?
Definitely.
But are they paying to use the facilities?
Oh, yes, it should be.
Yes. But I will find it out. I'll have, um, Sandy clarify about the registration fee for our team to be able to.
In previous school districts where I worked, John Giammarco is the head of the Pittsburgh Basketball Club. And they did pay the facilities, and I'm almost positive that the host school, I believe he waived, but I can't say that.
They, they have here before. They have, they have here before.
But it's really, it's a good program.
Has it always happened at the upper?
No, not always. Sometimes the upper, the upper is, here, here's what I'm going to say, and I, I want to be respectful. Up the upper, if they're coming up there, you gotta have a reason. You can't just get their easy access. And I think that's why. Got me? Number six, approved the facility field usage request starts on the Vikings for the DeMora Hamlin Youth Activity Summer Community Event from June twelfth through the fifteenth, that whole weekend at the June Year High School Field. So how, what's going to happen? So on June twelfth, the kids playing All-Star game, they're going to have practice that night. The thirteenth, it'll be the youth event for the kids, that, that, uh, Friday morning. You need to go for kids. Um, Saturday, there's no event on, on that Saturday, on the fourteenth, but the event will be the, um, celebrity basketball game at a, a location to be determined yet. And then the fifteenth at the high school will be the All-Star game. Any questions about that?
Which is also why I think partially why the Pittsburgh Basketball Club team is up at the upper because those are weekends.
They, they always go up there too. Yeah, they're always up there. They're always up there. Number seven, approved Presley Ridge CSBBH agreement to provide services during ESY this summer. Eight, approved Capri glass estimate for glass replacement in the gym doors and hallway auditorium for twenty-seven sixty-eight.
Broken, it needed to be replaced.
No, that's a good question. Right? This, this says gym doors, some.
Cracked by like a basketball or something.
Hi, door's so old, probably not. Is, is Mr., is Mr. Simpson on? Is he virtual right now?
Yeah, can you hear me?
There you go. We can hear you a little bit.
Yeah, um, I believe there is five panes of glass in the doors going into the gym. Uh, one was just, uh, it was spider web recently with a baseball. Uh, the other ones were previously broken. And then the hallways where the locker rooms are going down towards the auditorium, there's a spider web in the window there. That was an older break as well.
Thank you for that.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Number nine, approved the CDC ambassador's facility request for June eleventh from five PM to eight PM at the June Year High School Football Field. So we asked the question, yeah, I don't know what they're doing yet, so we're getting feedback coming back from, um, yes. It's definitely free around here. So there's, there's, um, four different groups. Group one is like our kids as far as, um, school activities. Group two, for example, like the little Vikings. Um, group three is, group three and four, I get them backwards, I believe sometimes, but the basics outside entities coming in to help to use our facility basically. Group four would be like, and some random, three would be the passion. Four would be like some random football group somewhere, one that come and use our field. And they just put in for, they put in for it, and we say yes. Yes.
Drug-free commercials, you know, um, that, that's like a totally outside, not related to us at all.
At one point in time, we had Pitt come and use our field before as well, and they were paying, you know, that's like group four. It is, they ought to fees, which would be, there's nighttime lights, the booth, locker room, stand, everything. And custodians, no matter what, get paid, so, um, no matter what. Approved Learn Well Agreement, uh, I'm sorry. I'll come back to this one. Sorry, y'all. Next, we'll go into co-curricular leadership. Approved. Oh, I'm sorry. Whoops. Approved the Sun Life Financial Renewal Renovacation effective July one, twenty-five for specialized employee benefit plan. There is no rate increase for the, for this year. I will come back to number eleven. An executive session. Next. Yes, ma'am. Next, under co-curricular leadership, approved the social matrix as presented. It's a lot of, um, field trips, and this looks amazing. And then you're right about that. This is amazing. Any questions about that? Any comments about that? Say it again. Next, under board policy, approved board affirmation statement for school reconfiguration plan to add Dr. Erwin Waschido to the interim superintendent.
Okay, so whenever you guys voted to add him on, so then I have to upload a bunch of papers to the state PDE suite site? And then in that, they say, okay, we approved and we voted him in. Now you were doing a reconfiguration, which is only adding an interim superintendent to replace somebody, and now you have to approve that plan that I'm submitting.
We're just saying he's our superintendent.
Yeah, that's all that difference. It's all that saying that he's, he's.
That is a requirement by PDE because as we all know, that you have to have a superintendent of schools.
And then number two, approved modifications to the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six school district calendar. Uh, I, I do want to, wait, 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 wait. I think we're going to go with this. So we, we're going to come back to this because the conversation will lead to executive session, um, conversations. Next, under educational leadership, approved, ratified the, the professional development matrix as presented. It's amazing. It's amazing. Good, good. Any questions, comments? Number two, approved the AIU Head Start Agency MOU from Ju- January one, twenty-five to December thirty-first, twenty-five. And then number three, approved the IDEA Part B Use of Funds Agreement, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six with the AIU three for July one, twenty twenty-five to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Any questions? Four, approved the notice of adoption of approved LEA policies, procedure and use of fund by school district with AIU three. Five, approved Millersville University of PA Affiliation Agreement for field placement. Six, approved service agreement with the Watson Institute for an autistic support classroom at the primary center for a twenty twenty-five, twenty-six school year. And seven, accepted donation of the two Viking Pride program, reform individuals Ed Pierce, Lauren Fragoneo, Joe Krajewicz, and Brabender Cox.
All of these people, teachers?
So we're going to say this, um, and we talked about it before, but one thing that we really want to do, um, in, in hopes that it comes here pretty soon. We discussed when we were creating this Viking Pride thing, you know, before we got to the border or whatnot. I know one thing that we were looking to do, um, was to expand this to the community. What I mean by that is, I think originally the idea was ten people would donate ten grand. And I'm not going to lie, I was like, it's going to be steep for a lot of people, right? That's not, that's not going to work. Like, it can work out, but that's not, that's, you know what I mean? It's not feasible. So what about us opening up to a hundred people donating a hundred bucks? Or even going to the community and saying, hey, community, this is what we have here, you know, open for donations if need be. And then that way you got the community buying in to what we're doing here at the district level. And then whenever they donate, they might want to pop in sometimes and, or schedule, hey, can I come in and check on this team? Can I see what's going on? Because you give some more buy-in from the community. And now, you know what? Now we're invested. Let's make sure that we're going in the right direction, you know, with, with these kids here. Um, so we want to eventually branch this out to the community because it shouldn't be just teachers. It shouldn't be just admin. It shouldn't be just district personnel. It should be the community as well, being able to buy into this program for our kids, us taking care of us. That was, so, so that was, that was what we originally said. Uh, Dan, right now, Dan, it's perked up right now. He's like, wait, what?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, maybe like a shout out on the website or something.
So we did push this out there. I don't know if it came down to you, and I don't want to throw nobody under the bus in those regards. I, I, I just know that that's the route that eventually we want to get to, and there's no point in them going to hold this in, and it's not coming to you all yet. Like, this is what we want to do. Yes, ma'am.
For football and basketball, I mean, fans pay to get in, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Season pass, season tickets options, can that be like incentive for that?
We, so whenever, that's a good, that's a good question, but I can't speak on what, um, A.D. Phelps is doing right now. I just, okay, good, because I know whenever Mr. Bushy was here, he was talking about trying to go that route. Um, but, but he's not here no more, so, um, if that's something that A.D. Phelps is going to, that'd be amazing. Cause we even, yeah. We even, we even talked about like different seating, um, but it was like liability. We talked about like, like roof seating, something like that, right? We talked about all that, you know what I mean? So, yeah, that's, I might be like a little bit of liability and insurance or not, but, yeah, we talked about a lot of things before, so it's good to hear A.D. Phelps is working on that too. Do you want to jump in by chance about this?
Jump in, um. Development of a foundation, and that would be ideal to keep the money separate, right? And then you would have the foundation that would develop its own committee, that would make decisions, policies and so forth. They could also, uh, award mini grants to teachers who had special projects, field trips and things they wanted to do. But I think it's a cleaner way to do it where you're keeping it separate from the district and not from the green funds. So that's something.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. What was, what was this suggestion? Somebody had the comment. What was this suggestion on the tickets for students?
We were, we were discussing the Viking Pride program, so I had asked if there were currently season tickets for like the basketball, football, baseball games. And if not, if it was something, Principal Davis told us it's something that you are working on. Um, but in my head, the idea was to incorporate it into a donation fee incentive or. Um, but in my head, the idea was to incorporate it into a donation fee incentive or donation incentive for people that want to participate in being in the part of the Viking Pride program.
Okay, yeah, that sounds good.
Does that make sense?
The money that you pay to get into the games, where does that go? Does it go to the district or does that go to athletics?
Well, it's like referees, you got referee payments, I'm not too
Where does that money go? Does it go to, to athletics?
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to speak for him. I'll let him address it, but I want to say though athletics and referees, they get paid too. They pay referees, all that good stuff as well, but cool. For sure. Let me go really fast, um. I told everyone we could get that portion off right now for next, until next week.
Do you have business fans? Like, you know?
I'm gonna wait till next week without voting. So with that being said, there's no other public comment, um, for us. We are going to break for personnel for executive, executive session.
Can I talk?
Yes, ma'am. Please.
Talk about, um, somebody like an admin. I can say something good about admin, right?
For sure.
About to talk about. So we, I work upstairs at the family center and we had an event the other day. It was a storytime event for our community and families. Um, it was really cute and Dr. Remal came. She was our guest reader for the kids. She dressed up like a dinosaur and ran with our classmates, and it was adorable. She was a fan favorite. Everybody loved her. The kids loved her. She was fantastic with our parents. Um, she helped out through the whole event and I just wanted to give her a little shout out.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Spring.
Can I piggyback really quickly? Jacob, I know you know Jacob. He's a kindergartner and he loves her, loves her office, loves the treasure chest. Comes home every day talking highly of you. And as a parent, I enjoy your weekly messages on Friday to let us know, have a good weekend, stay safe. I love those, whether it's email or the robo-call. I notice it.
Jacob, love you. That means something.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Remal. Um, so again, we're gonna break for personnel. This is gonna be executive session. We will not be coming back, um, after this. Um, our next meeting will be, uh, next Thursday at the Sturrocks Junior High School unless otherwise, uh, say something anywhere else. Um, but again, thank you all for coming to tonight's meeting. Please be there next week. Bring your family to home now if you want to, you know, if you're free. Um, but thank you all. May it be adjourned.
I don't know. I was like, wait, do they usually
No, not last, my tooth started to hurt and I started to validate.
Thank y'all. I'll be right back.
And then I always feel like I have brain fart.
Please take pizza on the way out. Please take food on the way out.